I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a few moments of silence. We have Paul Taylor, significant other Donna McGowan, CES kindergarten IA, Thomas Burke, retired maintenance supervisor, worked for CPS for 29 years, and Dorothy Scanlon, CHS English teacher, worked for CPS for 20 years. Call the Tuesday, June 14th School Committee Meeting to order. I'm opening this meeting since we have to do a reorganization of the school committee since we just had the election. So at this point...
Congratulations, Mrs. Ma.
Yeah, welcome to our newest member Pam Gah. Your nameplate is ordered. So I guess I'll start by open up the floor for nominations for Chair.
I'd like to nominate Brendan Bailey for Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? So at this point, I'll close nominations for Chair. I think we need to have a vote to see motion and a vote for Brendan Bailey for Chair. If anyone's willing to make that motion.
Oh, I move that we accept Brendan Bailey as Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? All right. You got promoted. Here you go. I'll give you the gavel. You want the center seat or slide over one at least?
Slide over one.
All right.
All right, Steve.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Matthew Verakis.
I'll second the nomination.
Motion made, seconded any other nominees? There being none, all those in favor? For Matthew Verakis for Vice Chair. Thanks. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the bill, any discussion? There being none, all in favor? I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 23rd, 2022 School Committee.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? This time, I'm going to turn the handle this way. Yep. I'll turn this over to Dr. Meyer. All right, so we have a full house here tonight. Certainly, you guys didn't come for, to see our reorganization. We're going to do some student recognition tonight. It's the end of the year, so we wanted to recognize some of the accomplishments of our students. So the first one, we're going to start by recognizing our students who received the state seal of bilinguism. So if we could have Principal Sarmak and Vice Principal Cash come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Evening, everyone. I want to read the statement about what the seal of bilinguism is and means. Clinton High School is privileged to be a state-approved district that can offer the state seal of bilinguism to graduates who have attained high functional and academic levels of proficiency in English and a world language. We recognize the value of their academic success along with the benefits of being bilingual or even trilingual. The seal of bilinguism appears as a seal on a student's transcript and diploma and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers and for college admissions. I will now read the names. When I read your name, please come up to receive your award. Sofia Agrida, Spanish.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well done.
Justin Gaggen, Portuguese.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations.
Good job.
Inaleez Gonzalez Rodriguez, Spanish.
Congratulations. You checked her hand, too.
That's okay.
Emmanuel Jimenez Perez, Spanish.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations.
Good job.
Inaleez Gonzalez Rodriguez, Spanish.
Congratulations. You checked her hand, too.
That's okay.
Emmanuel Jimenez Perez, Spanish.
Congratulations.
We have a few students that couldn't make it tonight. I'm going to read their names and what they received the award in. Samuel Lara Franco, Spanish. Joan Lopez, Spanish. Joan Ogando, Spanish. Samuel Herrera, Portuguese. And Juan Regis, Portuguese and Spanish. Congratulations to these students. Thank you very much, Dr. Meyer.
Thank you. All right, next, I'd like to invite Loretta Braverman up, our Assistant Superintendent, to help with our Read 180 and then our Systems 44 awards.
So tonight, we are presenting awards in a reading platform called System 44 and Read 180. This is a program that helps students strengthen reading skills. All of the students that we're presenting awards tonight have increased their reading lexile, have made a year's growth within a year's time, and have worked tirelessly to really enjoy and love reading to the point where we have students now who are reading independently. We're so proud of you all. Okay, so Russ Nellis. Now, some of our friends are not here this evening because it was a field trip and some other things that are going on. Russ Nellis is not here. Okay, so he'll be there. Steven Kari. Almost Steven. Congratulations. And this is Dr. Meyer. So here's your award.
I have to stand it?
Turned him off because I know she wants to take the picture. Oh, yeah, now she'll be there. All right. Thank you. Louise? Tireless motivation with Louise. Thank you so much, Louise.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You want a picture?
Yeah.
Got it? All right. Well done.
Outstanding effort, Kevinson Mello. Gabriel. Congratulations. Here's your award.
Congratulations.
Turn it around so Mom can take a picture.
He'll get you back.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Here you go. You need a picture? Can you turn for a picture? There you go. Show off your goods. There you go.
Yeah, let's have that hand. Come on.
Outstanding effort, Jeremiah.
Good job.
Yeah, congratulations. There you go. Turn.
Go to Mom. Proud moment. Outstanding effort, Joshua.
Good job.
Brian, outstanding effort.
All right, here you go. Get that, too. Melissa.
For her increase, this is for her increase of lexile level for 349 points this school Giancarlo Salamante. He increased his lexile level by 355 points this school year. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Take one picture. All right.
Timothy O'Malley. He increased his lexile by 343 points this school year. Congratulations.
Get a picture first.
There you go. Get in there.
Ethan Petrie, he's not here. His lexile level stayed consistent throughout the school year. Jordan Reel, his also stayed consistent throughout the school year. Joey Ricker, for all of his hard work, not only in my ELA class but throughout all of his classes. Dustin Shepard, his lexile reading level increased 290 points.
Good job, Dustin. Congratulations.
This next award is...
There you go. Get the picture in there.
This next award goes to our challenge quiz queen, most challenge quizzes taken all year, Ariana Miguel.
Thank you.
And our word star, who demonstrated the largest increase in words read in a month, is Juliana Lopez Montanato. And we'll put this over here. This award goes to most words read, 127,000 words and counting, Gregory Boyd. Okay, this one, most books read, five books and eight E-read articles, Dennis Morgan.
Congratulations. Way to go. Way to go. Great job.
This student had the most reading growth and increased 123 lexile points, Jeffrey Kane. Best effort and most positive attitude, Kristen Paulino.
Is that all?
And that's everyone. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you.
All right, so we know a lot of you probably want to stay and listen for the rest of the meeting.
But don't feel you have to.
But if you want to step outside and take pictures, that's fine with us. All right. Anyone here for public comment? CTA.
Oh, that was good.
Yeah.
Right on. CTA held their annual elections. The slate of officers was returned, but we do have some new building reps. At the high school, we have Tom Duggan, and at the elementary school, we have two building reps. So Lynn Anne Gaughan joins Emily Beatty. We had our CTA end-of-the-year dinner last week, and we honored our retirees and enjoyed their company. I attended the North-Central Presidents' Meeting two weeks ago and the Region FMTA Presidents' Meeting last week. So it's a week of dinners. We're looking forward to the end of the school year, some time to rejuvenate and come up with some new fresh ideas for our classrooms for next year. And as we go through the end-of-the-year activities with the start of field trips and field days, school is beginning to feel more like normal. And we're cautiously optimistic that when we return next year, that the students will now have that mindset of academic excellence, and we will have to spend less time on social emotional stuff and more time on curriculum that we're used to teaching. So with that...
Sounds great.
Really? I finished.
Little games on tonight. You keep talking. Have a wonderful summer.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Anybody from the PTA? CPAC? All right, so just some pretty quick updates, I think. COVID numbers, they were staying pretty consistent around 30 since, really, since April vacation. Last week, we had a drop-off, back down to only five cases last week. So we'll be doing our last reporting of the year to the state tomorrow. And then hopefully, I won't have to do weekly COVID numbers anymore after that. So we'll see how that goes. Some staffing updates. We had a resignation. Lindsay Osmer's ESL teacher at Clinton Elementary School will be, she's resigning at the end of the school year, mostly for her childcare reasons. Coral Stevenson, art teacher at the middle school, she's resigning. I'm kind of jealous of her. She's going to Arizona to teach yoga or something like that. It sounds kind of fun, but... We had an IA at Clinton Elementary School. Karina Perry is going to, is also resigning at the end of the school year. And then we have a, we received a maternity leave request for the fall. Carolyn Colanane will be going on maternity leave shortly after we come back to school. So we're working on trying to have a, probably a long-term sub in that classroom to start the school year, so there's a little bit of an overlap, so that we're preparing students for that. We also had Kirsty Clemente, IA at the elementary school, who also is resigning at the end of the school year to focus on taking care of her family as well. I have one other staffing update we did do. Now that the budget has been approved, we did have a position there for Assistant Business Manager. We did an internal posting for that. Annette Cologne was the only one who applied. She's currently our purchasing and payroll person. She has the appropriate license, cert, and certification. Because it is an Assistant Business Manager, it's typically the superintendent recommends, but I would need the school committee to kind of, you know, bless that. So if the school committee is okay with that, I'd like to enter negotiations with Annette Cologne for the Assistant Business Manager position.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations to hire the Assistant Business Manager.
Well, second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion, any questions? Being none, all in favor? Great. Thank you. I think it's great. Annette does a great job. You know, she's got her Business Manager certification. I think it's nice to continue her growth. And I think having a Business Manager and Assistant Business Manager, since our Business Manager is part-time, with all the extra grants we had and with the MSBA project coming up, I think it's, they're going to have plenty, plenty to keep them busy in that office. Keystone Board appointments for each year. Keystone's a special education collaborative that we belong to. Each year, we have to appoint a board member, since we're a member of that collaborative. Typically, it's me. Most of the board members for Keystone, different collaboratives do it a little bit differently. Keystone, most of the board members are superintendents. And it doesn't have to be me. It could be one of the school committee members if you'd prefer. Most of the meetings are during the, in the morning. So I'm willing to serve again if you want to formally appoint me unless someone else really wants to do it.
I nominate Dr. Meyer to serve on the Keystone Board.
I'm happy to second that nomination.
Motion's been made, seconded to appoint Dr. Meyer to serve on the Keystone Board. Any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor? Thank you. Without objection. Thanks. Great. That's great. Middle school, CMS Middle School, sorry, Clinton Middle School, Massachusetts School Building Authority update. So the building committee met last night, actually. We sent a, we had a RFS, a Request for Services, for an owner's project manager that was posted a while ago. We received nine proposals in response to that RFS. The building committee reviewed all of those. Last night, we met, we cut down a shortlist to identify our top candidates based on the ranking system. The next step in the process is to have interviews with those companies on the shortlist. Those are currently scheduled for June 22nd at the middle school. They'll start at 6:00. It was one at 6:00, one at 7:00, one at 8:00. We're doing three companies on the shortlist. We did have to go to our fourth option. One of the companies in the top three essentially alluded to the fact that they kind of were awarded another contract since they submitted it, so they don't really have time to do our project as well. So we respect, they were very polite about it. So we have our three, our three top candidates remaining coming in on June 22nd. Following that meeting, the permanent building committee will make a, will determine who they feel the top company is, and we'll begin trying to negotiate a contract with the top company so that we could actually have an owner's project manager on board, which will be nice, because once we get an OPM, they kind of can help drive that process and work with the MSBA, and they know all the tips and tricks, so. So that's moving along. That's a good step. We're on time. The plan is for that to be, the MSBA does monthly meetings to kind of, once we kind of work all this out, the MSBA has to formally approve it. They do monthly meetings. I think the first, we're shooting for the August 1st one, I believe. So we should be all official by August 1st, once we go through the interview, contract negotiation, and submit our stuff to the MSBA. School committee, I've included a proposed, a proposed calendar for the year. It has our next, you know, I just, I scheduled our next meeting for July 25th and our next meeting for August 22nd. Normally, we kind of cut down a little bit over the summer. And then kind of, I kind of put a proposal for the rest of the school year. We don't have to, if you guys are okay with accepting those, that's fine. If we want to, you know, tweak it or whatever, that's fine. We just need to make sure we know what our next meeting is at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed school committee calendar.
I'm happy to second that motion. Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So... No, I think, I, no, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any questions on it.
Anything else? It's very similar to the one we did this year. It's just kind of rolled over. Okay. All right. All in favor of approving this school committee calendar? And I believe that's, that's all I have.
Well, we have assignments.
So for the subcommittee assignments, what's the pleasure of the board? We can, Kelly's included the ones that we currently have, obviously the ones that Deb has, we're going to have to fill. Do you want to do this now? Do you want me to send it out? You can, you know, however you...
I make a motion in Mr. Verakis's absence as well. Maybe we should table this until the next meeting.
Yes, we'll send it out.
And maybe we can all email you with our, what our desires would be.
I don't, I don't know if it matters, but maybe do we just want to appoint Mr. Bailey and Mr. Verakis to the negotiations subcommittee, because we will be continuing with that between now and our next meeting. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, so the motion's been made, seconded to, to put Matt and I on for the negotiations, but then the table the rest for the next meeting, and I will send it out.
Okay.
All right.
Yep. So we, I, Mr. Chair, respectfully, I think you can just appoint people to these committees so that if he's willing to serve in that capacity...
Yeah, he said. Okay. I guess I'll send it out.
Yep. Sounds good.
All right. Anything from cricket? I've got nothing to say. Marketing?
No, we haven't had any recent meetings. We're planning on a summer meeting at one point, though.
Policies or facilities?
No, no policy didn't meet.
To the contracts, we... We do have the Unit D contract in here, the MOA, which is the administrative assistance. That one has been signed by the negotiating team. I believe they were trying to hold a meeting today to try to do their ratification. I haven't heard if they were able to do that or not. But if, I think we could take a motion to approve the ASME Unit D MOA. The ASME IA MOA is still, is not available at this time. Hopefully, we would have that for the July meeting. I think we're getting pretty close. Our next session is June 21st, I believe.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve the ASME Unit D MOA.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded to approve the Unit D MOA. Any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor? Okay. Under old bit, old business, first, I'm going to just turn it over to Joel. He was the chairman when we did the evaluation on Dr. Meyer, so I'm going to turn it over to him. He can kind of rule that evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have in your packet a hard copy of the composite evaluation that the chair writes after individual members have submitted their evaluations of the superintendent. And I won't read through all of it, but I will make note of the fact that, first of all, thank you all for, you know, working through... thank you all for, you know, working through that process. Thank you, Dr. Meyer, for your self-evaluation. It's really helpful for that context. That, and so overall, the following summative evaluation is a composite of the individual school committee members' evaluations. This evaluation includes a, includes comments as well, a composite comment as well as comments copied from individual evaluations. The ratings assigned are reflective of a majority of the board members' ratings. In other words, if two members rated the superintendent on a standard or an indicator as proficient and three rated the superintendent as exemplary, then the rating is exemplary. The school committee felt that overall, you have demonstrated the performance in your role consistent with a rating of proficient, although two members felt that your work merited an overall rating of exemplary. The committee noted that relative to Standard Two, Management and Operations, your work merited a rating of exemplary. Within each standard, committee members made note of exemplary practices on various indicators. You have led this school district through an extraordinarily difficult period with the highest degree of professionalism, kindness, availability, and an unwavering commitment to improvement for yourself and the district as a whole. You continue to demonstrate an appreciation for the small but important details without losing sight of the big picture. You led our schools through the pandemic through cultivated partnerships and working relationships with our town and state organizations. Your leadership with the MSBA has resulted in a viable middle school project. Your partnership with the D E S E Tiered Focus Monitoring Review was successful in validating the hard work and enriching curriculum happening in our classrooms and programs. Your commitment to inclusive practices and frequent communication has served to build relationships with all the families in our school district. Your mentorship of your administrative team has ensured a collaborative, focused direction for our schools, further strengthening the experience of our students. Your thorough understanding of our budget and that of the towns, and consequently, the strategic application of our resources, as well as your successful management of federal ESER funds and the Student Opportunity Act Plan, has ensured that the financial outlook of the Clinton Public Schools is strong and positive. Your approach to conflict has consistently been to begin by listening while working toward compromise and mutual understanding. Thank you for your dedication to the Clinton Public Schools. And there's a lot more, but I'll spare you the details.
Thank you for the evaluation. And we should probably sign a copy tonight before we go.
So I think for the purposes of clarity here, I'll sign it as the former chair, and you can sign it as the current chair. Because the dates, I guess I can sign it as the former chair if we date it prior to...
Today.
Well, to Monday.
Well, Steve signed that. Does anyone have anything they want to add?
Just thanks, thanks to Joel to bringing, putting it all together.
Well, thank you to all of you. Again, it's a composite. So as you go through each of them, you have copies of it, and we'll add a copy to the minutes. But there, all of your work is reflected in the composite, all of the comments that you submitted and the ratings as well. So.
And we should make a note of that to make sure, since it wasn't in this packet, we should include the whole evaluation in the minutes from this meeting so that it's a public record.
Yep.
Sir Mac, would you like to evaluate this golf game at this time?
I've been carrying you.
Okay. Anything else under all business? Anything under new business?
I just said two things for you. There's two pieces of paper that were, or two things slid into there. First one's just a letter dated June 10, 2022, from Commissioner Riley. I guess in the letter, the link to the resource doesn't really work, but it's just letting you know that they were trying to give some clarity on ESER funding and federal debt obligations and sort of providing some transparency on what the state's doing with what they've been awarded for ESER. So I just include it to you because it was addressed to school committee chairs. But it's, you know, I think we've got a pretty good handle on it, and we're aware of those deadlines. And we're trying to strategically use, leverage those deadlines. The second packet in here is the Early Bird Conference Savings for the M A S C, M A S S Joint Conference. This is the conference in the Cape. It's usually the first week of November. I think this year it's the second to the fifth. So it's usually a good conference. I try to go every year. It's a nice, you know, it brings school committee members and superintendents together. They'll be, it's usually, you know, like I said, it's like a three-day conference down the Cape, offseason down the Cape, but it's down the Cape. And, you know, you get to go to different panel presentations and learn different things from the presenters or from the, from the state themselves. There is an Early Bird special that, that's why I'm passing this out now. So if anyone knows they definitely want to attend, we can register before and save a little money. I also know that new school community members are usually asked to complete Charting the Course. And you can actually, if you go to this conference and you attend like the right sequence of sessions, it kind of fulfills your Charting the Course obligation because you cover the same thing. So it's just something to, something to consider. So I don't need any type of commitment now. You can look at it. If you have any questions about it, you can reach out to me or just let Kelly know if you want to go. And we'll try to, you know, I'll definitely send in my registration prior to the deadline. But if you, if you want to go, we can get that. I think it's before July 15. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to go if, if, I just need to make sure I can get permission to go.
Yep.
I find it worthwhile.
That's all I had, yeah.
Let's go two things. First of all, I want to thank Joel for his fight. This is one of my six-yearly committees. He's been the chairman for five years. And I appreciate it.
It's been that long? Time flies.
I do appreciate it. And I appreciate him walking me through this. So thanks, Joel. I really do appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Second thing, I can't believe this is the first time we've met since Memorial Day. I know this is probably no shock to anybody, but the, everything, the Clinton kids, the bands at Memorial Day and the kids marching. I know some of them are in the youth sports. But again, well behaved, and, you know, just do everything they did. But Robyn, I want to publicly apologize to you. When we, no, I did. I screwed that up. When, when I put together the list of who was marching in the band, I didn't realize we had two separate bands at Clinton. Mr. Ward was only lining them up off the list I gave him. And so I appreciate your flexibility, both bands. And we made this different stops. Because we hadn't had a parade in four years, the M C decided to play the national anthem at different stops, which I didn't know until we got there. So the flexibility of you and, and I apologize. I don't even know her name. The other...
Mr. Mac.
Boy, she really does love me now. But anyway, I did follow that up, and I apologize. And I made a note, whoever has that job next year, whether it's me or you guys, will have two separate spots. Thank you so much for what you guys did.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would also like to make note of the fact that the parade didn't happen without all of your hard work. I thought it was a great, a great day to be a Clintonian and to see so many people coming out enjoying the parade and, you know, observing Memorial Day. You know, I'm glad that we could do it again, and thank you for all of your effort.
Anything else?
Can I say that since the kids had the ability to perform at Memorial Day, and we had a spring concert, and then we played for high school graduation, they are so excited about band for next year. I have seen so much of ramping up, of working hard, and just smiles that radiate.
Grace.
We're on the right track for getting back to school as normal.
I hope so. It's not new business, but just a reminder, since I didn't put it in here. Friday is the last day. It is a early release. I think we're doing 10:30? 10:30 at the high school, 11 at the middle school, 11:30 at the elementary.
Recognition night for eighth grade on Thursday.
Thursday. And that'll be at the high school, the Veterans Athletic Complex.
Speaking of year-end activities, I happened to see in other districts, and I thought it was a great idea that I'd bring to the board. I was wondering, for the year-end celebrations that we do for the retirees, if that's something that we could make a little more, like maybe open to the community, have it in the auditorium so that maybe teachers can invite family members or former students want to come and see their teacher honored, you know, when a teacher's retiring? I just thought it would be, sometimes it gets a little bit cramped in this room, and it takes away a little bit from the celebration.
It's funny, because it's almost like, like Robyn's been saying, as we're trying to get back to normal, you sort of forget different things. Like even with all the number, the number of people we had here today, I was like, wow, this filled up quick. We probably could have gone in the auditorium. But I remember, yeah, I felt we were in the auditorium for so long just because we had to socially distance, you know? So we got to remember that. But yeah.
But just the fact of going up on stage to receive, you know, some type of award or...
Yeah, make it a little more, a little more formal than...
Right.
Yep.
So just wanted to bring that up for next year.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'm happy to make that motion, Mr. Chair. I did that for five years.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made seconded. Motion in all favor?
Thank you so much.